More than one. I know it. That was a dumb design.
You want?
He's the man had it.
We changed them.
Do a tier map.
Tier map first. I don't know anything. Matt, make sure they don't close both doors.
Okay. This begins the March 1st open work session in reference to land use and tier maps, community sewer systems. Gentlemen?
Good evening. How are we doing this evening? For the record, Keith Hall, Chief of Planning, Wycomico County Planning and Zoning.
Jack Lennox, Planning and Development Director.
Thank you again for having us for our council this evening. Over the past few months, we've been talking about the tier, the growth tier map, a result of state legislation that changed the way that subdivisions were happening as far as density and what type of septic service they've had. This is nothing new to this council or the previous council. This has been an ongoing discussion that had numerous work sessions either in front of this body or the predecessors, or the previous elected council members, excuse me, as well as, in addition to the numerous work sessions, there was an extensive public outreach and involvement campaign of trying to find out what rural property owners thought about the potential implications of the county adopting a tier map that met the state expectations. And there was a public hearing held back in February of 2013. Where we ended up at that time was really given that the midterm elections were so close at the state level, it was decided it was best to park this item. We had both the elections at the state and the county level and to wait until those elections were over. Now, we're at a different time. It's a different administration up in Annapolis, and we're coming back in front of you with both the comprehensive plan discussion in which the growth tier map will be one part of that comprehensive plan. Some of the things we heard, and we've talked about this before, is the themes that we heard from both the public as well as elected officials, is how this legislation took away local planning and zoning authority. That was one of the big things we heard. Another one of the big things that we heard was how the impacts to the rural property owners and limitation of being able to do major subdivisions consistent with our own county zoning and having this imposition of a minor subdivision or state regulating how many lots that we can get into ag areas. Through that, we've been working with this council to try to come up with some innovative solutions and looking at some type of hybrid product. We've gone over several tier map assessments, and as we said, the tier map is mainly predicated on the current county zoning. In addition, there's a component of it that looks at water and sewer plan as well. It's consistent with that. The draft tier map that we've presented to you is consistent with the state expectations. Where we've tried to evolve this conversation that we didn't have back in 2013 and we were unable to have at that time is, how do we provide some flexibility here? How do we look at our local autonomy again? What are we going to do to make sure that a property owner, whether in a rural or designated area, can develop more than a minor subdivision on onsite septic systems? So, what has been handed out to council today is a little bit of briefing going through the background, the principles and concerns. I mainly want to draw your attention to the recommendations. Here's where we're at in this dialogue at this point. We've presented a draft tier map. As I previously stated, the draft tier map is consistent with our current county zoning and the water and sewer plan. It meets the state's expectations for the starting point. However, we don't want to review this or view this map as a static document. It's going to be fluid. We've got to be able to make amendments to it. And while those amendments may not be the norm and they may be the exception, processes got to be in place to make sure that what we're doing provides that property owner with flexibility. I just want to draw your attention right under the discussion of the growth tier amendment process. This is where the rubber hits the road. We're trying to afford the property owner, whether in a rural area, consistent with the ag zoning district, or in a designated growth area, the ability to be able to request a major subdivision, and that means eight or more lots. Right now, as the draft tier map has it, those areas would be limited to nothing more than a minor subdivision being served on individual septics. That's not acceptable. While there is not a big demand right now for new residential growth, and this is purely limited to new residential growth, we want to have provisions and processes in place to accommodate that when that discussion picks back up in the future. So, for the viewing pleasure of those at home, I just want to read this out loud. And what we're trying to achieve here in this hybrid is the ability of a property owner to initiate a modification of an existing tier designation that restricts development served by an individual septic to no more than seven lots. To achieve this, it's going to be based on one caveat. It's going to be contingent upon a development proposal being received by the planning department and being presented to the planning commission, and that the applicant, hopefully with good soils and based on current zoning density restrictions, will be able to ask for or achieve more than eight lots. If so, then that designation request should be honored and should be granted. And through that, you would move from a more restrictive tier to a less restrictive tier without changing any of the zoning underlying the tier. The tier is, the tier map is essentially an overlay, and it will be used as a policy document.
So, the, at that point in time, you're saying that the 1 in 15 would kick in as in 7/7?
Yes, sir. Zoning density still prevails. So, for example, if you have a property in the A1 zoning district, right now, there are two development options for you, density-wise. What's referred to as the cluster, which is one dwelling unit per three acres, or you can do what's called a conventional subdivision, one dwelling unit per 15 acres. Those are still going to apply. What the restriction is removing is the ability to only being limited, ask for seven lots. So, for example, if I have 50 acres in the A1 zoning district, and I wanted to do a cluster subdivision, I'll use 60 acres. It's a good divisor by three. If I had 60 acres in the A1 zoning district, prior to this regulation, I could have came in and asked for 20 lots. Well, that's the zoning density. Then you have the health department factor as well as meeting the perk test. And that's why you see these two provisions really trying to guide this discussion, because that's where this rests. This is still a subdivision process. It will still remain in the hands of the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, again, we'd want to produce that ability, have a discussion where you can have, if you've got a good rural property with good soils, more than seven lots, and bring back that development potential consistent with our local planning and zoning authority.
So, we're sort of accepting the seven lots that were mandated in the O'Malley administration, that that is the process that's going to continue on?
That is something where we have no ability to change regulation. There are two types of subdivisions. There's a minor, which is no more than seven lots, and there is a major, which is no more than eight lots. In response to this legislation, the previous sitting council amended our Wycomico County subdivision regulations to take the minimum subdivision up to the maximum extent allowed by law, which is the seven lots. So, we still have to adhere to that.
So, if, any questions?
I mean, so if we, you know, these, these principles seem pretty good, but then we still have to draw the lines. I mean, this is, starts and then we've got to figure out where the lines go for three and four. Is that correct?
Well, I think what's already been presented to you is drawing the line. We're using the zoning map as the basis for the foundation of those lines, and then getting into the difference between where you can have our designated growth areas, the difference between where they would be restricted to a minor subdivision on, on individual septics versus being able to do a major is also contingent upon the water and sewer plan. The lines have already been drawn in existing documents and regulatory controls. We're using those lines to try to adhere to the state regulations. So, I think at this point, if this council's comfortable with the current zoning districts as it lies, as well as the water and sewer plan, which is under your authority, then we have the foundation, and that's how we were able to produce the growth tier map for you that we've reviewed over the past meetings.
Any questions? Subdivision regulations, how do they come into play with this?
Subdivision regulations specifically was the adjustment to the minor subdivision going up to seven. Other than that, subdivision is consistent as it was before the septic bill came into play. Nothing changes. The subdivision activity in the process is one that is under the authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and is not of the authority of this legislative body. So, I know in our previous discussion, when talking about this hybrid, we had talked about this condition that we discussed, but we started talking about process as well. And one of the things that was discussed from a very preliminary standpoint was, what role does the council play? Well, going back, sharpening the pencils and evaluating this again, is the council should play the same role that they played before the septic bill legislation was enacted. And that again, is that, that is the authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Where your authority lies in some of these future discussions is potential water and sewer plan amendments. And we're proposing something that doesn't change that. We do not want to create a conflict between the Planning and Zoning Commission and this council. We do not want it to where approval of subdivision applications becomes a legislative process. And I think that was to concern, that was clearly expressed at our last discussion. That's why, when you look under the administration of this, and this is not trying to oversimplifying it, it is the same as it was before the septic tier map regulation came online. It's saying that the planning commission has the authority to review and take action on subdivisions. This body has the authority to review and take actions on water and sewer plan. The department, just like anything else, we will do the housekeeping that goes along with this when changes do occur, and it won't require going back and opening up the comprehensive plan for a simple amendment to a tier map. It goes back to the discussion before of, no different than our comprehensive plan has a land use map in it. And some of those areas that are designated for growth will be annexed. Well, just because they're annexed doesn't mean we all of a sudden go back into the document, open up the comprehensive planning process, remove that one piece out, close the plan back up, and go at it again until the next time there's an amendment.
Was the prior council, were they satisfied with the tier three and four designations?
I think there was concerns. I won't speak on behalf of the private council. Maybe council members that were on the previous council can talk to that a little better.
I think that's where the big, you know, I guess, the big discrepancy was initially, was just where that line was going to be. But I think we've addressed that by throwing this amendment process in there. And I like the, I like the thought of following just our current zoning map to determine where those lines are. That way, we're not picking new winners and losers.
We tried that. We didn't get very far with that.
Right.
So, where do we go from there?
Well, what we'd like to do is go ahead and roll up the, this program, which is inclusive of a map, and some of this text, work through legal to refine the text a little bit and make sure it passed the litmus test from a legal standpoint. We'd like to roll it into the draft comprehensive plan. We'd like to come back to you at your next work session, roll up our sleeves, start working on the draft plan. If you guys are okay with the principles of what's going to be designated and how we're going to amend it, again, you're going to see the land use plan as part of the comprehensive planning document. It's consistent with this. We're making sure that all the policies and programs that are under the authority of planning and zoning are lined up, and we're ready for a very good dialogue and discussion moving forward with the draft comp plan.
Okay. Right?
Yeah.
Everybody good?
Makes sense.
Sounds good.
A lot of work ahead.
The sewer systems, in the comp plan, it doesn't really, I don't know maybe what to expect from the comp plan, but I was hoping that the comp plan, unless I missed it, would make more references to the concerns we have over septic systems that aren't, that we know are going to be failing. But I didn't see any of that in the comp plan.
We'll make sure that you're directed right to it. Not only that.
That's very polite.
Again, we know where the, where the county is at. We know we have failing septic systems. We know we have nutrient targets to meet as part of the whip. We know we've got to come up with, again, innovative, cost-effective solutions. And the comprehensive plan is not going to put out any policy recommendation. That would be contradictory to that. It has been swept of all landmines. It has been well vetted over the five years we've been working on this with the planning commission.
Okay. So, that's not really the role of the comp plan specifically?
Not specifically. However, it is the role of the comp plan not to discourage any future policy considerations that this county may have with regards to providing some type of community or public service to existing subdivisions that are having failing septics, whether in the designated growth areas or in agricultural zoned areas of Wycomico County. That's just one of the features of our hydrology. There's areas with perched water tables and existing subdivisions were built on very small residential lots that aren't compatible to be retrofitted with septic system replacements, and we've got to take that into consideration moving forward. But again, it'd be more from a policy standpoint than a regulatory standpoint.
Perfect. Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. But then, that sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Thanks for, thanks for taking the time to review it. The next item on the agenda is the poultry houses, which we've heard a lot about tonight and over the last few several weeks.
To, let me lead out the discussion if I can. We had, had said at the last county council meeting that we were attempting to arrange a public forum to be held where representatives from the Maryland Department of Mental Health and Hygiene, the Maryland Department of the Environment, and the Maryland Department of Agriculture would, would hold an open forum. We have arranged that. It will be held on March 22nd at the Wycomico Youth and Civic Center in the midway room, commencing at 6:00 PM. The second broad comment I'd like to make before I turn it over to Mr. Lennox is that during the, during the public comments, I believe I heard an assertion that the county executive has the unilateral authority to stop these poultry developments, principally the one on Naylor Mill Road. And to my knowledge, that is not at all the case, and I'm sure the council knows that, but I think the listening audience, or the viewing audience ought to be aware of that as well. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lennox. We've been working on due diligence fact finding since the last county council meeting, and Jack has a proxy that he can present to you.
Great. Thank you, Wayne. Going back to some of our previous reviews, there obviously are a number of directions that we can take. Many of the, the public comments you have heard tonight and previously touched on a lot of issues regarding health and public safety. And as indicated, the forum that the executive is holding is, is something that we're hoping will bring additional information ahead for our consideration. And that is something that we would anticipate could run parallel to what are more traditional zoning concerns. Zoning has difficulty taking responsibility for a number of the environmental issues, environmental permitting, that has traditionally been covered in our case by state agencies and other health-related agencies. Zoning deals better with bulk type of issues, setbacks, how high, how short, how far back, you know, do you need parking? Do you need buffering? To what extent? And so, number of the documents, and in your last discussion, you had a couple of them put together. We reviewed them with the administration. And I'll circulate for you just a, hopefully, a relatively brief sort of pointed outline about the direction that you could consider taking as far as zoning, additional zoning requirements, if that's the direction you'd like to choose. May I hand that out, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I would like to point out that what's being titled as a discussion draft really is to try to get on the, on the table certain issues that have in some of our adjoining communities and in the literature in general, been considered and incorporated into some other jurisdictions, but also look at it from our specific Wycomico County perspective. And if I could just walk through this very slowly with you. From the beginning, we have to agree on definitions. I've avoided the word CAFO. CAFO is not terminology that we use in our code, and obviously has many other definitions out there, and is defined by numbers of birds and all sorts of other things. We use the phrase poultry house. We rather innocently in the zoning code do not define poultry house. We just refer to them like we all knew what they were. Well, we've obviously gotten beyond that point, and we're suggesting at this point that the definition of poultry house should be defined to include everything related to a poultry house, all related buildings, structures, and appurtenances that include specifically fans, feed bins, litter storage, manure sheds, incinerators, composters, and cold storage. If those who are more familiar with the industry than I can think of anything else that could show up there, we should put it on the list, because we want to make sure that the active parts of that facility are being dealt with and not being dealt with casually. We're talking about the code as it applies to existing and as it applies to new. And so, we need to define that in terms of how we would be, any new regulations would apply. So, we're suggesting that this would, that would distinguish between the existing house replacement, and we've heard about that. That's apparently something that we're going to be seeing more of, and allow also for expansion of existing house footprint. We need a number, 10% is put out for discussion. So, it would allow for some relatively minor expansion of that. New houses would have to comply with new standards. The issue of road access is something you discussed earlier this evening, and that is something that we've, that you have already agreed to take under consideration and to consider how that would apply, frankly, not just to this, because you're not singling out any particular crop, any particular building. Again, the county has, in the past, dealt with this sort of innocently, and just wished property owners well, and we trusted that they would interact with our roads responsibly. And it's probably true that we need to take a closer look at how we deal with that for everyone who impacts our county roads. There's also been discussions about how zoning relates to the Right to Farm Act. We are a right-to-farm community, and this evening, you did make appointments to the Ag Reconciliation Committee. That is a committee that has not met often in our past, but when they have, it's been fairly contentious. And they've been a good intermediate step between an agricultural operation and in court. That is really what the point of that was when it was established through our farming community. And there's also a process called mediation of sorts to try to make sure that operations are following best practice. And so, that is something that goes after the fact. They're not regulatory from the standpoint of reviewing permits. They look at situations having to deal with, whether it be the containment of animals in your yard, or whether it be the best operation of, of the agricultural operation in any way it's defined. So, it's important, if we do move further towards any zoning regulation, we recognize that right to farm and the process that goes along with that side by side. In our own code, we differentiate, starting with the comp plan, going through the zoning that's up on, that's being projected at the moment, with something called designated growth areas. And that is something that you struggled with and related matter on the tier map. But remember, the tier map falls back to zoning. Certainly, the zoning code goes back to, to the zoning map, and all that is based on the comprehensive plan. So, we started to wrestle a little bit with that issue of what happens when agriculture and residential use have that interface? What happens when they're nearby? Because, as you've heard many times, the areas are not exclusive. So, we do have residences in ag areas. We also have ag uses in our designated growth areas. And then, part of that is because you don't do a zoning map. You'll hear sometimes when Keith goes through, say, land use map, land use plan, kind of two different things. One's a snapshot, and one's your plan. And the plan has to look out over multiple decades. So, you're trying, when you go through the comprehensive plan, to set up something that makes sense today and hopefully makes sense as the community evolves, as we grow, as time passes. In agriculture and a designated growth area has been dealt with as an interim use in a lot of respects, something which makes sense in a holding pattern where people own property, they're allowed to give beneficial use from that, but yet, we're not quite ready in terms of development. The market's not ready, the roads aren't ready, water and sewer's not extended. So, we have ag uses in designated development areas, but yet, we also know that we're going to have residential and commercial. So, we're suggesting that we look at those in a couple of different ways. And the standards in the predominantly ag district would be different than the standards when you get closer to developed areas and areas that we know will be developed in the future. The standards that you've seen, again, in other documents, establish a vegetated buffer. It's probably best not to do that just along the road, but do that in a way that surrounds all the active portions. Inactive is, it's back to the definition of poultry. And I discuss later, a little bit later, what a vegetated buffer is, and you've all seen pictures perhaps, and it's one thing to see a vegetated buffer on day one, and it's another thing to see what it looks like in 10 or 20 years. And so, we need to have some standards. And we suggest something to be included later. We've looked at setbacks from legally established residential dwellings, not on the property. So, the family farm is one thing. The person next door obviously has to be considered differently. A couple of ways you can go with that. One of the suggestions that's been out there is 400-foot setback from a home, from a dwelling. I have to be careful about how I use that phrase. From a dwelling. There's some other standards that actually get a little stricter than that, and you could consider as an alternative. 500 feet is being used as well. And then, it also has, has additional setback, you're looking at the fans going towards the house. So, that's something you would want to consider. You know, we've heard suggestions about the separation from dwellings. One of our neighboring community, communities has identified schools, churches, nursing homes, daycare centers. For our sake, I'll say mobile home park, because we've got, we've got those. And then, a subdivision of a certain quantity. You can pick a number. We've used the number 10. That was what was in one of the codes we looked at. Discussions from the health standpoint also seems to suggest that having an additional setback from those, those receiving areas would be a good thing. That's that sensitive population that you're hearing about that might be particularly susceptible if there are any impacts at all. That's who would feel it. Minimum setback from the center line, one regulation says road, something else says public road. Again, if you're in regulation, you have to define it. State, county, city, or town maintained road. And it's funny, we forget sometimes that we're not just dealing with the metro core. We're dealing with small towns that have growth areas around them, and so, we may be facing that as well. So, we would define public road. And then, the standard fall back the 100 feet from all property lines. Now, what happens if you go into areas that are in that map? Anything you see in color, and I know it's a little bit tough to see at times, but according to our standards, and we try to keep this fairly consistent, if you're dealing with the color gray, it's a municipality, so that's not subject to this. That's an incorporated municipality. Any of those colored areas in any color are designated growth areas. Any of those colored areas in any color are designated growth areas. Designated growth areas, again, it's not just the metro core, and it's not just around the cities and towns, it's also around your rural villages. So we have to look at Whitehaven, Quantico, Allen, Nanaco, Five Bowls, Powell. There's one more. And Parsonsburg, thank you. The, so standards for the designated growth areas probably look at the minimums that are established in ag as well as different setbacks from property lines. And then we get the issue of suggestion of berms. If you're near a residential neighborhood, if you're near, if you're in an area that we know is going to grow, do we incorporate earthen berms into that buffer area around the perimeter? And that's something here again for discussion.
Jack?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt you, but since we were leaving, what about reverse setbacks that people have been talking about?
That's, that's a good point. We could incorporate as well, we're termed reverse setbacks. We could impose setbacks for new homes, new dwellings, setback from an ag use. Now, we would have to discuss, are you talking just poultry? Are you talking about just poultry of a certain size? Or are you talking about ag use? So we have to define that a little bit better.
Did that, if you did just ag use, you're gonna, there's probably be anything built in the tier four.
That would be rather extensive, correct? That's why we put that note, Mr. Holloway, as you commented before on the plan to warn people, you know, we are an ag community, there's going to be stuff associated with it that, you know, may bother you from time to time.
And most people, and that's what people sign when they buy a home in the ag community.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
They don't pay any attention to it, but they sign it anyway.
My question on the reverse setback was, where you have a situation where there might be a potential for planned development.
Yes.
And how do you, you know, make sure that you're establishing assurances there on a property that doesn't have any buildings at that time?
That wouldn't be reversed. That would, that wouldn't be what you'd call reversed, would it?
Assurances that the development that has not yet been established?
Well, in other words, right now, if you have a, if you have a property, if you have a, the property line, you have a building that's close to it, we've already sta, we're proposing that there be a certain degree of setback there.
Yes.
But if that building's not there yet, property line is, then the chicken house can be much closer, and that would force the development to be, the house be much more than.
Yes.
It's enforced both ways.
So my, in my terminology, a reverse setback was, what do you establish for property where the development isn't there yet?
You could impose the exact reverse of this. You could require them to be X hundred feet from the poultry house.
But they might not have that.
Provided that, if you're looking at a development, large parcels, if you're out in the ag district and the adjacent property is coming in for a development plan, you are more likely to have that, the area available to do that. But you're right, if it, if it's a lot next door, an individual lot, and that's all the man owns, then you're not gonna, you don't want to make his lot unbuildable.
Right.
So we would have to write some flexibility.
Just make it pertaining to subdivisions.
I think you'd have to look at existing planted subdivisions as well.
Sure.
Or exclude existing lots. Exclude existing lots of record.
Depending on when we get a sense of how you're feeling about that, we can, we can drop that. The, the last thing, and again, I'm certainly not an expert on this subject either, is the detailed landscaping plans. We'd like to get some input from those perhaps who are in the business. This has been borrowed from an adjacent community. But it's a pretty detailed layout. And then also requires, and there's one paragraph on the back sheet, is maintenance. So, you know, things happen, and if plants don't survive, storms occur, they would be required to replace.
So would these buffer regs, I guess? Would you have a separate version for inside the designated growth area that incorporates the earthen berm into the design? Or would that be just be a subsection in these regs?
I envisioned the, the berm being defined within the landscaping. You're right, and not separate from that.
Right.
So you're right, we would have to modify the back section.
And have one section as just a one ag district and one that's designated growth area.
Yes.
Jack?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to draw this out. Say you got a farm, okay? And here's a county road, okay? Somebody owns these lots along here, along the county. Say there's six lots here, right? Okay, somebody else, and there's no homes there yet. See what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if somebody wants to build poultry houses here.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the way we've got it on this paper, they gotta be 400, at this time, they only have to be a certain distance from the county road.
Yes.
And 200 feet from property line?
Yeah, 200 feet from the property line, yeah.
If it's in the designated growth up top, it's still only 100.
Right, okay, so how do we protect? Well, you've got to think about this, well, I'm thinking about this two ways. You say you're protecting the landowner that's going to build the houses, but you're also going to be protecting the farmer in the future from complaints.
Yes.
You see what I'm saying?
I do.
So, you know, so how do we, how can we adjust to property that's not built on but is, you're able to build on, has the right connoisseurals maybe, not even approved lots?
Are you picturing those being existing lots of record?
Either existing lots of record or buildable lots, you know, not, you know. I think you would have to distinguish that they're existing lots of record. Is that right?
That would be my recommendation.
That's what I was talking about, existing lots of record.
Yeah, right.
Right, so.
That's what I was calling a reverse setback.
Yeah, yeah.
I made up your right terminology.
Well, I was thinking reverse setback is if the chicken houses were already there, people couldn't build close to them.
That's the reverse.
Ooh, that's a double reverse.
Yeah, the double reverse. So, you know.
Go back to the beginning.
You know, so you've, you know, and I guess that's, that's a question, how do we approach, approach that? You're right, it's, this has all been worded in, the other codes have been worded as separation from existing dwellings. And now we're going to, we're suggesting separation from potential dwellings.
Yeah.
Only on recorded lots.
On recorded lots. Okay.
You know, I've heard from some people that say that it should be 400 foot from any property line. You know, we've heard that, and you probably will hear it in the future from someone. I don't know. That's pretty tough because you've got so much different kinds of property out there that'll never be built on. You know, land that's been ag land preservation or forest preservation and stuff like that, Is there any way that, you know, at some point in time in this, you can identify those types of properties? So we're not, if you have, say you have a piece of forest that's in forest land preservation.
I think the county has all that mapped, don't you?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do.
It would be 100 foot if the property was in forest conservation, ag easement. It would be a simple property line.
Okay.
It'd be 100 feet.
Well, on that, Jack, you know, you talked about the buffers all the way around the property, but if it's bordering, you know, forest land conservation, it wouldn't necessarily make sense to require this buffer between the house and the forest. I mean, perhaps in the, only in the agricultural district, I mean, is there a way with zoning to request a special exception if these rules, you know, just don't make sense? And come before the planning commission, you know, make your case, you know, and the planning commission, developers have needed a special exception from parking or whatever. I mean, you know, it's been fairly reasonable, but, you know, why require a buffer, to buffer you from a forest?
Yeah, that's a good point.
It wouldn't have to be by special exception, that could be written right into the regulation. A defined setback from property line, from the property line of lands which are in all the categories that you're talking about.
I'll tell you the truth, I'd like to see if we do this legislation, when we do, when we do this legislation, we're going to do legislation apparently, I'd like to see the whole legislation be subject to special exception. Because there's so many circumstances out there. When you look at what we have, I mean, that could affect the livelihood of either the farmer or the livelihood of the people that own homes. That's a thought. When I say livelihood of the people that own homes, I mean, quality of life, I guess is a good way to put it. Is that a good idea?
No, I'm trying to figure out whose mind makes this one up.
You might want to consider that in the, in the growth area, but I, I think a better solution would be to have a clearly written code. Because every time you have a special exception, you're, you're, you'll have a very difficult time to completely eliminate subjectivity.
Does Mike Boon want to start this for us?
There you go.
I just mentioned, we said.
Yes, I, yeah.
Mr. Farmer had a question earlier. First paragraph under the landscaping requirements says a vegetated buffer may not be required or sufficient existing vegetation exists. We can add to that, and that meant to be on the property, but we can add something about the adjacent property. Just make it that clear.
I should have known you'd be so thorough as to have already thought, anticipated.
But I didn't take it quite far enough.
You know, another thing I just thought about on these, when you're talking about fans, you know, the technology in poultry houses changes quite often. Yeah, I mean, and the poultry farmers can tell you this, the poultry company might come along two years from now and say, your fans will do a better job if you put them on the other side of your poultry house. So I don't know how efficient, I guess when you build them, it's gonna.
It's going to force it down the road.
Yeah, so. I don't know what we would do about that, but.
I guess how, how does?
I'm reading wrong paper, I'm wondering.
Does council feel about the 400-foot setback versus the 500-foot if fans are faced away and 600-foot if not?
Well, we've, I think we need time to review it, and I want to move this forward as quickly as anyone else. I think we need time to review this because I was thinking the same thing, 400, 500. I would also think that the council really, very much seriously, and I don't know if we do this as a group or individually, but somebody actually needs to go on location and take a look at what 100 feet really means or what 200 feet means. Because to pick, to pick an arbitrary 400, 500, you really have to know exactly what is entailed. So somehow or other, we're going to have to take that initiative. I know, we could do that. We know where some are right now. We don't quite know what the distances are. A gentleman was talking about the old Fruitland Road, and yes, there are. There are some that are behind a house, and then there are some that are a good distance away. But I couldn't tell you what the, the distance was in, in feet. And I think we need to know that and feel comfortable with it.
To, you get your bearings in that, in that regard, and I agree with you. You could go to, to, to any county land and flag at 400 feet.
Yeah.
And that'll give you your bearings.
Yeah, right, you don't have to.
You may run, I mean, you may encounter difficulty trying to go on, onto private property doing that.
Well, you don't really have to do that. We can use a rangefinder.
Well, I think it helps people to see.
My rangefinder's good for 1,000 feet.
What does 400 feet mean?
Yeah, and.
What does that look like? Is what you're after.
I have a phone app can, as Mr. Kramer was, I have a phone app that can do that to the foot. You can stand in the middle of the street and you can, it'll tell you exactly what's so far, as long as I have a landmark that's most current with the mapping system.
But I think that's important, and we can do that. We've got plenty of land where we could, we could demonstrate what that looks like.
We'll try to orchestrate that, okay, for everybody.
Another thing we ought to do, and I think we ought to arrange a field trip and visit a couple poultry farms. I mean, I don't know how many of you all are familiar with them and how they operate.
We could, we could certainly.
Everybody shaking their head, yeah.
We could certainly do it all at the same time.
Let me see, Joe, let me see if we can try to put together.
Yeah.
It's a good idea. In the meantime, and it is important what, what Vice President Holloway was saying, we do need to start making some decisions on 400s and 500s. In the meantime, though, is there any way, Jack, that we can get this, some facsimile of this towards a tighter legislative bill?
Sure.
And then it would be easy just to change the numbers if we needed to.
Yes, sure. That's the next step, yeah. The reason we did this, obviously, is so that we can get to the points we have to discuss. At least in my mind, when I see a lot of small prints, they're all kind of blurs. So we'll get this and then we'll put it into the.
Well, you said get a legislative bill, doesn't it have to go to planning and zoning before?
Well, I say legislative bill because we have, have some facsimile of what it's going to look like. I think even to give it to planning and zoning, to the planning commission.
Is that the way we usually do that?
I'm not saying we're adopting a bill.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just saying we're putting something into effect so they can get a great idea of where, how all the puzzle pieces are put together.
It can be done that way.
Okay, all right.
What would you recommend? I would recommend the way that Mr. Cannon's discussing it, is that the council go over this, come to something you're generally comfortable with, subject to public hearing, and then refer to planning. Can I ask Mr. Kilmer how he feels about that approach? You get it both ways, Mike.
Yeah, planning commission, that's, that's the way it goes, so. I mean, there'll be ample time for public input, commission and before the council.
Right, then you have something for the public specifically to respond to.
To look at.
Okay.
So we'll arrange the, try to arrange the field trips sooner.
Yeah, we'll try to get something, you know, within, within the week.
Yeah. Or just volunteer these school bus.
Have you, have you seen him drive?
I'll follow, I'll follow.
Will your, will your little GIS thing be running?
Sure, it's a transic.
Okay, any more questions from council?
Well, I mean, I, as I've mentioned before, and I appreciate the work you've done, Jack, I think it is important to, you know, as much, you know, if we're going to talk about increasing to 500 feet, 400 feet, talk about that more in the designated growth area. And, you know, because we just talked about in the tier maps that, you know, this is where we're going to be focusing on subdivisions. And so, you know, we need, try as we can to make these align where the designated growth areas are easy to build homes, harder to build chicken houses, where agricultural land is harder to build homes, easier to build chicken houses, you know? I mean, it's, you have the converse in those areas, and that maybe more tighter regulations in these areas will have more natural effect, moving chicken houses out to agricultural land or away from residences. I would encourage, you know, when they do more tighten these up, that designated growth area, that might help alleviate future issues for having large chicken houses built within a mile of 10 subdivisions or, you know, whatever the situation.
Well, it makes sense. What do you do when you end up with a subdivision like Saddle Morris Road? I mean, it's not near anything. It's just, you see what I'm saying?
I know.
So.
Yeah, I mean, and that's.
That's what I'm saying, there's so many circumstances to this thing. This thing has.
Well, well, you know.
They're all going to get tied knots over it, you know?
And as you all know, there are some farmers that don't want, you know, any houses allowed out in the farming areas just to avoid that situation, so, yeah.
Is there any way to find out how many chicken houses are being rebuilt on current properties versus new chicken houses? Only when they fall down or burnt down. I mean, seriously, they have some of them.
Well, as Mr. Petty was saying, they're, they're getting old and people are rebuilding them.
You haven't had any building permit applications for that? I can ask what the process would be and when we would find out. Obviously, we find out now when they submit for stormwater.
Stormwater.
State finds out when they submit erosion sediment control. As we find out, I can find out more about what the process is for replacement.
A few years ago, they had a really big snow, and I think they used some inferior trusses, and a lot of poultry houses fell down across the eastern shore. So that, something like that catastrophe would, would bring that about, you know?
Jack, someone had made the comment that, that the poultry houses were being built without, before they were even getting a CAFO permit from the state of Maryland. How's that possible?
Wayne, I think you heard that, about that.
The CAFO permit is not required until you want to load birds into the house. So it seems counterintuitive to me that someone would make that investment, build that development without a CAFO permit, but fact of the matter is, the development proposed at West Road, to our knowledge, there's no application yet on a CAFO permit.
So the only time they get CAFO permits is when they're actually going to have confined animals in the, in the location.
They can't load birds in until they have that permit.
Well, we've also.
Well, we've also heard that they have loaded birds in without having a CAFO permit too.
That's a regulatory, I mean, that's a state regulatory issue. But it, again, it's counterintuitive, it does seem backwards, but that's the case.
Big risk.
Very big risk, I might.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Any entertaining motion to adjourn? A second, all those in favor? Please, gentlemen.